Hi, we have a following any order for our cover twenty eight, twenty twenty five. Hope to get regional health buildings sweet A. If you would please silence any of your cell phones or any devices at this time, and if you would like to ask a third attorney or attorney, just make some prayers.
Bless them. You've called us all to be your servants, O Lord, and you've laid before us many things to do. Some are easy and some are hard. Help us not to treat the easy things as trivial or the hard things as impossible. But in all things, in your service and in your love, in your hand you pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Okay, information reports, uh, we have several, all comments recently in this.
What I want to give is the Lakeside Building's good report, they're still there. At the last meeting, the turf punk got up and told all of them, give information reports. A lot of those calls to like, yeah, you, so them were for throw or for money. We didn't do any good, and he charged me a bite.
Thank you.
Right, sir.
We have some information reports, but also community action, all of you have a flyer from community action. Would you guys, did you share that information? And we will also make sure that social services or Veterans Officer, everybody has that. It should be a flyer. Don't have one, well, we will get one shortly. Okay, you look that one for you before you leave. Just a reminder that they are available for energy assistance, especially as we move into the cold winter season. And also that they provide support for, for net start. So before you leave, make sure we get that. Okay, Texas Department of Transportation. Represent the findings from off bridge, off system bridge inspections in Polk County. They all wear their, their lovely colors.
So, uh, Trent Robinson, the bridges in the Lockton District. As the commissioners know, every two years, we have consultants come through and inspect all of the, what we consider off system bridges. So that would be all the bridges that are owned by Texas, they're owned by the city of the county. This information is used to just get general condition of all the bridges to help us better partner with the county with programs for what their specific needs are when it comes to things like bridge replacements and things like that. In the past, Polk County has kind of hovered around the eighty four mark, Texas state legislature except the target of ninety for everybody. This year, we were actually able to open up four new bridges between last inspection and this inspection, which helped bump up the scores considerably along with that. I would like to commend the county on maintaining their existing bridges as they did have very many bridges that had off system ratings. Now, that's a very large undertaking, as we're sure you guys are aware. So with that, the condition score in twenty twenty four was eighty one point six. This year, at the conclusion of our inspections, the condition score for Polk County is eighty nine point one six. Again, over a seven point rise. That is quite undertaken, very impressive. I appreciate you guys working with us to get these bridges in shape and maintained in such good condition. With the off system bridge inspections being completed, the consultants are finalizing a few of their reports. As soon as those are finalized, we will be meeting with each one of you individually or in pairs, however you'd like to meet, in order to get one of our specifics if you'd like. Over that, my D E, this report, so if you'd like to close this.
Good morning, Judge Mort Murphy, a commission. Um, I'm here for something special today, and it is an honor for me to speak because there's a tradition in Texas. And it stands as the highest treaty within the Texas Department of Transportation, and it's called the Roadhand Award. So this was established in nineteen seventy three by the state highway engineer, Elizabeth Berry. The Roadhand Award was created to recognize public experience citizens who have gone above and beyond in supporting and leading major transportation projects and programs that benefit their communities. This award is not just a symbol of achievement, it is a celebration of partnership, dedication, and the spirit of service that drives Texas forward. The Roadhand Award honors those whose contributions have made, excuse me, a lasting positive impact on their communities. Recipients are individuals who have played a crucial role in developing and implementing successful transportation initiatives, ensuring that projects are completed on time, within budget, and to the highest standards. Their work strengthens our transportation system, making it safer, more efficient, and more responsive to the needs of Texans. This award also highlights the importance of collaboration. It recognizes the partnerships between Texas, local governments, and other stakeholders. Partnerships that are essential to delivering transportation projects that truly serve our communities. It's important to note that this Roadhand Award is reserved for citizens outside the highway industry. So active state legislators, Texas authorities, and other transportation agencies are not eligible. This ensures that the honor goes to those who services truly above and beyond, often working quietly behind the scenes to make a difference. Each recipient's name will be inscribed on the Roadhand Hall of Honor plaque, which hangs proudly in the foyer of the Dewitt Seagull Building just across the street from the Capitol. A lasting testament to their legacy and impact that they have made. Today, I want us to celebrate the Roadhand Award and the remarkable individual who embodies its values. It's my privilege to present this award to Judge Cindy Murphy. And again, that I would like to present to you, and thank you so much for all of your hard work and everything that this mission does and this county does to support Texas and the community. We appreciate it, it is a true partnership. And we have a little, we have a little, we have a little.
Come on around so you can do your photo.
Yes.
And I will tell you all, I first met Kelly when I had to do audits for opposing the transportation.
Whatever corridor.
Corridor was. So John Thompson said, if you're not going to be part of my solution, well, here you go. So I ended up on the segment committee forever and ever, isn't it?
Yes, thank you so much. So proud of you and all of your hard work. It is an honor, it truly is.
Yeah, we fixed that now. Are we knocking Matt Martin? Well, no, I do have to say this, this would be impossible. Our previous commissioners, our current commissioners, I think everybody has a part in the solution. But I do have to say that I'm very proud of our Polk County team. They, they start looking very colorful, but they've done a great job as citizens of Polk County. And none of this would be possible without the teamwork and everybody.
And so this is a really great honor.
As I hold it up backwards.
Five, five or so that are given out every year, and I'm so happy to be a member of this team. So thank you so much.
Okay.
Yes.
One, two, three, one more, one, two, and three, and only one more, one, two, and three.
Thanks, Tim.
Can we get a picture of him as well?
Yes, you guys want to come up? And sorry to hijack for me, but this is a surprise.
I appreciate it, we all appreciate it, but we especially appreciate these.
We wanted it to be a surprise.
Okay, come on, Commissioner.
Yes, y'all see, come on.
Please, you don't get to stay too early.
All right, everybody smile, keep your eyes open, one, two, and three, one more, one, two, and three, what did I say? Only one more. One, two, and three.
No, everybody look this way, come on. One, two, three, one more, one, two, and three. Well, thank you. I understand. I do have to tell you, all those guys make fun of me because I don't know what the correct terminology. Not an engineer, I don't have anything to do with roads.
You hold your own.
I do, I ended up.
Thank you, Judge Murphy.
Thank you, thank you, Kelly, you'll be careful. Okay, delinquent tax office, well.
How am I supposed to follow up?
This is going to be boring in comparison. Congratulations. Go ahead.
Okay, so I'm going to give a brief update on our collection report. So that's going to be from October first, twenty twenty four to November thirtieth, twenty twenty five. So this is our tax collection report. So if you turn over to page one, we're going to have our mailing for the fiscal year. So we have mailed twenty eight thousand three hundred thirty six point notice letters. The goal is always to get taxpayers on a delinquent roll for front addresses several times a year. This usually results in either they pay in full or set up a payment plan, so it's a policy that you can measure. The next page is going to show our new lawsuits, the dismissal judgments, and release judgments. So we have filed two hundred and sixty nine real and personal property lawsuits to collect delay on property taxes on three hundred and seventy two accounts. The dismissals have resulted in a total of a hundred and forty nine lawsuits that involve three hundred and forty nine thousand nine hundred and ninety seven dollars in taxes, penalty and interest being collected for the county being dismissed. During the fiscal year, we have taken judgments on a hundred and twelve lawsuits involving over two hundred and thirty two thousand in delinquent taxes owed to the county. There have been thirty nine release of judgments filed due to payments totaling over fifty nine dollars. On the third page is our tax sale and excess funds results. So this year, we posted a hundred and twenty two tracts of property for tax sale, resulting in over one point two million being collected for those judgments and prorated on just all the taxing entities. The excess proceeds from the share of sale resulted in just over two hundred and ninety four thousand nine hundred and thirty six dollars being dispersed to Polk County. So we're still holding on for now. On the fourth page, we have the top twenty five delinquent accounts. So our law firm regularly monitors and reviews the delinquent accounts on your roll. And beside each account, we have listed the current status of those accounts. The next page is going to be our two-year collection comparison and hope count on status of accounts, which is based only. The twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four collection was over one point four million. And the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five collection was over one point seven million in delinquent taxes penalties that we've collected. Although we have the county status of accounts for base only, which shows a breakdown of the accounts that are on the roll. So we have twenty percent in lawsuits, there's over thirty percent in active collections. There's sixteen point three nine percent in deferrals. Then you have your bad address, your return mail, your unknown owners, which results in about well over thirty percent. So the law firm does, we do have departments that researches addresses, tries to find their addresses to reach these people. And then the rest of the roll was broken up in small percentages of bankruptcy or fifteen below, asset limitation, and so on. The last page is going to show the total tax collection percentage for the past four years. So the twenty twenty four original levy was thirty million seven hundred and fifty thousand two hundred and four dollars. So the percentage of the levy collected with penalty and interest is ninety seven point fourteen percent as of the end of this year. Does anybody have any questions?
Good job.
Thank you, thank you.
So it wasn't as exciting as we made it before. No, no surprises, no shocks, everything's still going good. Anytime you have any questions, please feel free to stop by our office, contact us, we'll always be there, me, or Gina, or Jenny, so be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, our next person is our social service year in report. You have a copy of the twenty twenty five January two report included in your packet.
Good morning, how everyone. Well, I'm excited about this information here because I would never like this. As I was all boarded here in November of twenty twenty four, I was looking at how the system would be in writing and how we were saving money and losing money or losing and taking. So when you look at the first page of the graph, you see how it's broken down. And you will see that none of these numbers are in the negative, they used to be in the negative. That we used to have these percentages here, they were all negative. In other words, they were trying to find funds to pay those. But now that we have initiated the I H S system, we can put it in the system and unless you see the percentages of what's being saved versus what was being lost. So on that page, I just happened to show that it's, it's working well. The I H S system is what helps us monitor and put in and pay the bills on the computer that we use. If you look at the next chart, which is our vendors, so when we get our vendors, we add them into the system. And as you can see on here, the illustration is cost effective. It's helping us utilize the software that helps us not do dollars a dollar. In other words, if we had seen three total claims, we billed them at four thousand nine hundred dollars. The amount we actually paid was two hundred and ninety dollars, that's on three clients. So our average cost for each person is sixty nine dollars ninety four cents. You will see as you go down that we have used the system wisely because we have, not only do I just put them in the system, but if I see what we can save normally, I can call the company and say, is there anything else that we can do to get a different rate of version? Because sometimes, you know, one is five, twenty of them are down to a loan. So we use utilizing the system very well when somebody can save a lot of money on this part. The only problem that is still dollar for dollar is our pharmacy. And I'm working hard to try to find someone to get medications that are better, more cost effective for us on that part. So if you look at the page shift, the next page, which is the, where I broke it down. So the first one is the same groups. The amount that they billed us was twenty thousand dollars, now this is just for one person. And the pre discount that's in our system said three thousand, which we would have had to pay them. But as I said, we called and we gave reimbursement, and we asked them, is there anything that we can do? Or do you have a better deal? So they gave us a reimbursement sheet for eight, eight hundred and sixty two dollars. So our final payment out of that was eight hundred and sixty two dollars. So we were working the system, but we're also utilizing the fact that we can call them and ask them, is there any other way we can bring the cost down? So it's really working out really, really well. You'll also see on here that they out, the ones that are out of, out of county, you see the six hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars. Well, in our system, when we put it in, we put it in a pre discount. And so the discount being those businesses we got, we still save versus what we would have actually had to pay. So the system does work really, really well for us. And we also have cut out late fees. When I came here, there were late fees, the huge amount. But now we comfort that by saying, when the person gets taken to the hospital, we find out who in the hospital was, we called them and told them to send us the bill versus going to the jail or wherever else. Then we can actually get on top of the bill, because sometimes they don't send us the right paperwork. And then we have to send a denial for them to send us the correct U D O four or fifty hundred. That helps us out a lot, too, it saves, saves them a lot, it saves them a lot from that part. So we also have initiated putting everything into the computer. It used to be the only parts that was put into the system. Now, if you were to come in and ask me anything, I could say, pull up that vendor and show you that we're working the way it is. In the last page, you'll see, this is how the lender system works. So if you look at the top page where I showed you the sixty nine, you'll see that the pre discounted, which is the Medicare, Medicaid rate. Sometimes we don't get Medicaid rates, we have to use Medicare. Medicare is a little more costly, but it's still safe. So you can see how the system, while we put it in under the codes and everything, and we get pre discounted rates, that's the top. So that's in the outer county, we don't usually give any extra reimbursements on them because they're not really, really willing to work out any extra. But that's what you see, but we did save on that one person. The bottom one is where our local hospital, and we always check. If they tell us, they'll give us a reimbursement of four hundred and fifty nine dollars, I mean, speaking of twenty five dollars, which one of them will take versus the woman. But we always make sure before we take that twenty five dollars and put it, we put it in the same system because sometimes it'll be a zebra, well, we won't have to make any. So we always make sure that we put both calculations in and we try both to save us money. The last one you'll see down there was the one that the patient saved her life and, and thought she is going to be able to go back and work, and she's not going to push her foot. The offer was eight thousand dollars. I called that doctor, and I asked them, is there any, any way? And she said, we don't do Medicaid. I said, okay, what about Medicare? Well, Medicare was still high, high cost. I said, well, what about self pay? She said, yes, I will offer you a self pay rate, and she was at three thousand five hundred. And we gave her twenty four treatments, and she's going in. So this is the one, I want you to see that we are now utilizing the system to this full advantage and we're saving money on every client that comes into the hospital. I just want to get my questions.
I do have a comment. I, I do want to commend not just Tammy, but also the jail, specifically jail medical, because they, they have been coordinating, you know, and, and working on coordination. So who goes to the jail and the jail.
We have three, three.
Thanks, David. Okay, new business, the consent agenda. We have addendums for FY twenty five, item number fifty one thousand four hundred and eighty four dollars and sixty cents. And for FY twenty six, item number one hundred and twenty three thousand seven hundred and eighty three dollars and sixty cents. And we have a request from the department to take a minute, and so we will hold a minute. Is there anything else anyone wants to add to the council? Off the deck room, I'm going to turn here about. Third, say aye, I, I mean, aye. New business, regular agenda, item number eighteen, consider approval of personnel matters as follows. We have review and consider personnel action form requests submitted by the department head since the last meeting, and review of any on-class emergency timing. We included all the preliminary listing of all of P A S included in your packet, and there are no emergency matters in this. Marching through, commissioner, second, back to the on-class, say aye. Any opposed? Item nineteen, consider request for revisions and amendments to the budget as follows. Your FY twenty twenty five and FY twenty twenty six budget revisions and amendments as presented by the county auditor's office. A copy of all those revisions and amendments will be provided for your review.
Yes.
It's already in the back of, perfect. Marching through, Commissioner Dugos, Secretary Commissioner Farris, all fours say aye, are there any opposed? Item twenty, cast ballot for election of Polk Central appraisal district board of directors for the twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven term. We have correspondence from the P C A regarding the election of the board members, was included for your review. A minimum of eight hundred and thirty four votes is needed in order to be elected. This year's nominees are Tom Curran, Dan Ellis, Steve Bullham, Leslie Kilbore, and Mike Naddles. In case anyone doesn't receive the whole eight hundred and thirty four, then it would be an issue. However, there's only five candidates on the ballot this year, and all five will be elected regardless. We don't have anyone that needs additional votes. So basically, we're just going to canvas the ballot and approve what is the court's wish. Unless you have another candidate. Okay, I need a motion, I'll make the motion. Motion to approve candidates as stated. Drive second, Commissioner Dugos, all fours say aye, are there any opposed? Motion carries. Our decision is court ever made. Page one, consider approval of regional mutual aid agreement for D B S Texas county level governments, DEPCO jurisdiction. Courtney Comstock, Polk County M C, can discuss it, is she here today? Hiding behind the wall, Courtney. Okay, this is, this serves these proposed agreements, which were included for your review, serve as foundational framework for cooperation among counties, cities, tribal governments, and institutions in the DEPCO region. And they claim that to support one another during times of crisis. So mutual aid may be activated when local disasters declared, a civil emergency is identified by a governing official, or an incident commander determines that local resources are insufficient. At that time, other agencies can provide personnel, equipment, supplies, and facilities, such as fire departments, law enforcement, medical services, public works of volunteer. It can be done verbally or in writing, but it must specify the type, the quantity of resources needed, the destination, and the timeframe. All these entities operate under the National Incident Management System and the Incident Command System, which ensures that we have standardized coordination and communication. Law enforcement officers responding under this agreement are granted arrest authority within the covered jurisdictions, and tactical units retain control over their operations during high risk responses. A DEPCO plays a central role in it because what they do is they remember one together. They make sure that everything is standardized and that we're able to move forward accordingly. Courtney. At one point in time, we had an incident where they came back and told us, well, we don't have signatures for everybody. Everybody has to have a specific in-love use of one another. And so then Courtney and I were scrambling to try to get agreements and some of them were with counties that were in our DEPCO region. So this is part of it, is that they have standardized all of that. Do you want to add anything to it?
I don't think I can.
Okay, anybody got any questions?
I'll make the motion.
Commissioner Robinson? Second, Commissioner Purvis, on Thursday I. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item number twenty-two. Discuss and consider appointment of committee to review county landscaping and assist in preparation of specifications for a request for proposals. As the courthouse is nearing completion, then we are going to have to move forward with finding someone that's interested in doing the landscaping. We do have individuals that are interested. And those landscaping costs are obviously going to increase after the restoration is complete as well. So there's two parts to this. One will be the actual landscaping of the courthouse itself. And the other one will be the landscaping maintenance from that point forward. So what I would like to suggest is that what we did for the Judicial Center is we engaged some of our local partners. We engaged the garden club, the master naturalists, master gardeners, some of our local landscapers. It basically formed a committee that could go through, look at it, and create an authority and a plan for us. I do have an affidavit of extension from Commissioner Cassidy. And so he is abstaining from any discussion or vote because he is related to local landscaping and maintenance landscaping. So how would the court like to move forward? Yes, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Same operation?
Okay.
Will do. Then we will move forward. We will appoint, or we will ask our partners to each appoint one person. I do have to tell you, it worked well, but the number of people on that committee was rather large. I know because I was on that committee. And it's hard to get twenty-five people to agree to something. So if we could just say that each of these organizations can have one or two people on there, then that would minimize the back and forth. You okay with that? There's a motion. Okay, Commissioner Robinson? Commissioner Purvis, you want a second?
I'll say, yeah.
On Thursday I? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number twenty-three, discuss and take any and all necessary action on construction bids received on the general land office community developers' law grant housing and urban development. Most impacted and distressed road and infrastructure projects for precincts two and four are G L O contract number twenty-four dash oh-six-five dash oh-four-four dash E five-three-six. A copy of the recommendation from G L S is included for your review. And we have representatives here as well. This impacts Commissioner Cassidy and Commissioner Dubos. So in reviewing the base bids and additive bids and consulting with the commissioners, G L S makes the following award recommendations to the court to waive the informality of the bids submitted by C E Barker L T D so that it may be accepted and considered. Award package one, base bid and additive bid two, as well as package two, base bid and additive bid three in the amount of two million, two hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars and five cents to the low bidder, which would be C and J Contractors. L L C rejection of bid package one additive bid, bid package two additive bid one and additive bid three, and authorize G L S to re-advertise every bid road construction projects. The grant funds that are available for construction are three million, seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars and fifty cents. The proposed awards listed would be two million, two hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars and five cents, which would leave grants remaining at one million, five hundred and seventeen dollars, five hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars and forty-five cents. Commissioner Cassidy and Commissioner Dubos? How would you like to see? Do, they are available, G L S is available. Do y'all want to go ahead and step forward? Nick, or Nick and Susan, why don't y'all go ahead and step forward and provide more information? Well, we've already discussed it with them, so hopefully you're already in agreement.
So the contractor we're recommending y'all would do, we've done work with them in the past. They built the bridge for us under a grant program in Jackson County, Dumbo, Duna. They've also worked as a subcontractor in Hexton on the Diaball bypass. So I'm very confident in their abilities to perform this work. Unfortunately, the way I structured the bid, we're going to have to reject the road projects and rebid those because the contractors who bid the bridges did not bid the road work as well. So there's no way we can afford the road work. That's why I'm asking to go buy it this way. This is going to allow the county to get all of this work funded and under contract, assuming we get bids similar to what we have right now. And helping with contractors that bid this work the first time. Most of them are going to come back to the table, as well as a few others that didn't bid. Because of the way I structured the bids, they're also looking to come to the table and give y'all proposals on doing this road work. So just kind of a timeline for what I'm looking at. If y'all approve my, our recommendation, will be in the paper this Thursday. We'll open bids November eighteenth, which is the week before Thanksgiving. And that allows me to be on y'all's commissioners' court for the week of Thanksgiving to take action on those bids.
Commissioner Dubos, second, Commissioner Cassidy. Any further discussion or questions? All on Thursday I. Any opposed? Question carries.
Thank you.
I really want to commend Nick for taking the time to analyze these bids and most effectively use the grant funds this way. Even though we have to rebid, he's got it going really quickly, following up, talking to everybody. And then, I mean, it's a, we could have gone a different direction, but this saves approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grant funds that will be used on the roads. So it's a, yeah, it's a win here for everybody.
Thank you, Nick.
We'll wish they this the next time.
Yes, go ahead, say. Discuss and take action on change order one for the G L O C D D G Regional litigation program project in precinct three, G L O contract number twenty-four dash oh-six-five dash oh-four-five dash E five-three-seven. This change order was also included in your packet for your review. And it extends reconstruction on Mark Luther King Street to the actual dead end. The original scope estimated twenty-five hundred linear feet, but surveying later showed that the road was longer. Now the project is underway and funding is sufficient. The county is requesting to complete the full length as originally intended and this would be the District Purvis's petition.
Thank y'all. Nick, since, thank y'all, y'all have been so much help on these projects. We really appreciate y'all, I feel y'all have been really.
It's our pleasure. We enjoy working.
It's my pleasure.
Okay, so that was Commissioner Purvis, Commissioner Cassidy. Any further discussion and questions? Long favor sit down. Twenty-five, discussing considered change order request number one to contract with Garland D B S Incorporated for replacement of the roof at the Built Formation Center. During demolition and drying of the Polk County Built Formation roof, several issues were discovered that must be corrected for proper installation of the new on-bent roof. There was no, wood blocking was found on the charpet walls. This must be added to secure the new coping metal. In addition, two existing drains must be retrofitted to integrate with the roofing system and five new conductor heads, downspouts, and square two rails need to be installed. This change order is included for your review and is vital for the integrity and longevity of the roof. But Grady is here, if anyone has any questions. He did provide the report that was provided, so everybody should have an opportunity. Any questions for Grady?
Don't move.
Motion to approve, Commissioner Cassidy, second, Commissioner Dubos, on Thursday I. Any opposed? Question carries. Also, Grady is to be commended because he has certainly met his share of challenges since he, since he took over major. Thank you, Grady. Thank y'all. Okay, item number twenty-six, discuss and consider any and all necessary action to apply for the D B S Texas Council of Governments DEPCO solid waste grant for FY twenty-twenty-six. Per Andrew Harmon, the grant application has opened and will remain open for approximately thirty days. Cherie Pike with the Environmental Enforcement Office has been gathering information to coordinate a tire and large item collection event planned for March of twenty-twenty-six. It's an excellent opportunity to utilize the grant funding. The court's approval to proceed and the grant application will closely follow last year's format and the addition of roll containers to accommodate large item collections. A copy of last year's grant application is included in your packet for your review. Cherie has also explored alternative event locations, including the pavilion at Pettigo Park and the site used by the Texas Craft Fair at thirty-three hundred Highway one ninety. Both locations offer ample space for setup and traffic flow while providing more shade and comfort than last year's parking lot location. If there are any other locations that the court would like to consider, then you need to know. Carrie needs to know. And Cherie, the cost to rent those facilities may be included in the grant report. To strengthen the grant application, the court needs to consider identifying potential matching funds for in-kind contributions, such as providing meals for the event workers, which is not eligible for grant reimbursement equipment and operated to assist with loading, loading on favor staff working the event. We also, last year, the Sheriff's Department assisted by private trustees to help with heavy lifting and reserve deputies to provide oversight. So all of that can be included as part of the match or part of our contribution to the project. So how would the court like to proceed? Commissioner Cassidy, you are on the DEPCO.
I'd like to run over that, I have to talk to the court. So are they all made on? I don't remember who worked with me, I'm not, I'm treated anymore, so.
Okay.
I even from good, that's more than, but I got a bar over there. I don't know if you, you tip, it's pretty impressive. And we have a lot, we have a lot of time. I'd just like to see more of this. Waste also, you know, two different can of.
Yeah, and you can get with Carrie, I think that was part of the discussion, was expanding it or having another bid, whatever the case might be, for large items. And then for fighters.
I would love to, I would love.
Large items, okay. And we just pay ours, whereas we have twice a year for large items. It's very successful, you know, every year, every time it's successful. So with yours, do you do large items as well?
And we just tires, we do lots of them.
Okay.
I think we're, then, put them up real short. The audience, they said I.
Not moving their tires. Okay.
But you know, you got like so many tires. I actually take that one to my boss.
I don't need no, I don't need to collect nothing here, we're talking about over here. Is that the only thing left? That, I don't, four van, we're not having that.
Well, and there's no reason why we could not put up a large tent so that some of those people can just circle through there. Okay, so you wish to move forward with this grant application. Comes as a recommendation, Commissioner Cassidy, second, Commissioner Purvis, on Thursday I. Any opposed? Question carries. Item number twenty-seven, consider any and all necessary action regarding the renewal of agreement with Raymond J Luna and D for medical services at the Polk County Jail. Jail, the jail medical contract with Dr. Luna's office is set through the fire at annual October. We need to move, go ahead and move forward because it must be in place by November first. There's, we are not making any recommendations to change any on that contract, but we still want it to be reviewed by people counseling. So I'd like to go ahead and approve it. And the changes will be minimal, but we would provide, if there are any at all. I'll make a motion. Motion to move forward, Commissioner Robinson, second, Commissioner Cassidy. All on Thursday I. Any opposed? Question carries. Item twenty-eight, consider any and all necessary action related to request from Sheriff Lyons for additional corrections officer positions at the Polk County Jail. During the development of our FY twenty-twenty-six budget, the sheriff requested ten additional corrections officer positions. At that time, we had seventeen vacancies. So we asked that we go ahead and move forward, try to fill those vacancies. When the original request came in, we had not yet made, the court still had not made the decision about salaries, pay, benefits, et cetera. So now the jail is experiencing a surge, I guess I would call it, in the jail. At that time, they requested ten. We did tell the sheriff, we promised the sheriff and the jail staff that we would hold some money aside, trying to make sure that we had plenty of reserves that they could take care of that. And so we chose to move forward that way. At this time, all those physicians have been filled, but the inmate populations are at record highs in portions of the old jail. We have already been reopening that and the jail is going to be hard on that so to increase our useful capacity. So now we're back to, they're short. At this time, the facility's capacity right now, the original capacity of two hundred and eighty-four beds, the current capacity is three hundred and eleven beds. So the population has shifted around as it always does. If they, all of a sudden, they'll look up and they got a surge in the jail. So part of the math is that the population, the last time we discussed it, was at two hundred and ninety-five and the jail current facilities only has room for three hundred and eleven beds. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so you have two hundred and ninety-five and we have three hundred and eleven beds. I can do the math on that, that we're going to run out of space. So we gave you the information. They came back and requested five corrections officer. And the annual cost for that would be two hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifteen. The new positions, the ten full positions, which are the only for correctional officers, would be five hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. So I do have a question. Does that include supervisors? Okay, so that's going to be an added concern?
Should have.
If you have ten, yeah, you have ten new corrections officers.
Got to be spread out a little.
Are some of those going to be, need to be supervisors or all of them going to be corrections?
All the correctional officers.
Okay, so that now. Okay, so that number's true. What I was trying to get at is that if some of those have to be supervisors, then that number's not true.
No, the supervision staff down there now is capable of handling that for 10. There should be no new supervisors.
So my recommendation to the Court is that we go ahead and do all 10 of the new positions because we only have 16 beds left. And furthermore, we have, they have some issues that the number of women creates an issue for them in terms of staffing. And it also creates an issue for them in terms of facilities. And I don't see where we have any choice. And I don't care which kind of mat we use, we're still going to have to house people out of them.
And while we, if I may?
Absolutely.
While you're, while you're working on, you know, considering this, as the judge is saying, some of the things that compound our problem is, is that in classification, we're at 311 capacity. Today, we have 299 full inmates, that's inside and out. We have, we're at 100 in Louisiana, one in Walker County, and five in Setson County. The females, we keep them open, but that number continues to creep up. Classification causes issues because we are only able to keep certain inmates together in certain tanks. Some of the problems we, Mr. Woods, have been working on in the last week, and Captain Dawson. We need to, it's something that as I go toward my retirement, that I didn't want to even think about. That even when we start talking about hiring these 10, these 10 officers, so that we can bring, start bringing back in some of these inmates back and housing in the old facility, we have found that that's not even going to give us enough room. And then if we start talking about the other side of the old jail, we're going to be trying to get that prepared. And you and Mr. Woods was considering this, is that as, in order for us to bring all these inmates back, we're going to have to start talking about more space. When we started building this facility, we, we laid the foundation for a 500-bed facility. Construction, we're actually, when it comes down to water, sewer, kitchen, laundry, and all those things, and we are fast approaching, we're going to have to start looking at that, that aspect of adding onto our jail. Because if not, we will continue to have to sit under Louisiana, and Setson County, and Walker County, and probably other facilities in order for us to be able to bring back and start housing all our folks under one roof. Being outside the county, it just compounds problems all the way around in the criminal justice system, the courts, probation, parole. It's, it's just a compounded problem. And only space and staff is going to fix. When we, when we look at today, we're at a end, total of 299, 311 beds because of classification, even if we had this down. The 10 is, is ready today, still couldn't bring anybody back on. This classification runs a lot. But with more space, working, Mr. Woods is looking at what this is going to cost to get that other side of it going? Or what would it cost if we were to go ahead and start looking at expanding on that other side of the building to bring in more beds, to bring those other beds in? And then that, that gives us also the possibility of even starting to look at instead of paying the house out, to start being muted, to choice, to start housing here in Polk County, housing for Harris County and for other facilities. You get online, everybody's trying to find space. Every county around is threatening out, is housing out of space in the lot and they're running Louisiana Dust. You have those extra beds to get out of the folks right here in Polk County and being able to help pay for the facility for those contract beds.
So right now, we are reviewing some of that information also, Sheriff, since we can't seem to get people out of the jail, with Sheriff. And I do have to tell you that construction costs from the time that the jail was built have increased 65 to 80 percent. So if what we're going to do is keep people incarcerated, or incarcerate more, then we need to be ready for warrants. So are you going to match them, or how would you call it?
So when we, when we hire these, when we, we've got to hire these 10, so that, that maxed you out at 311?
That will allow me to be able to start. It won't, it won't max me out at 311 because classification won't allow me to be able to keep them all under one roof.
Yes, sir.
But what it will allow me to do is, is to be able to move most of my females, bring them back and house them, say, over in the old side of the jail, and then staff that, that side of the jail with this, this new staffing.
If we get the old side of the jail back, how many beds would that give us, Sheriff?
Somewhere between 359 and 362.
Okay, I couldn't remember that number. Then we would have to hire more than that, give us that.
I think that with that 10, that should be able to give us enough to be able to house. Because they're all the same, yes, right, once a half.
But you have to keep in mind that he's still, like the jails commission, places restrictions on them.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we, but I mean, those 10 would be, we would be fully staffed to what our, to what our true capacity is.
Yes.
Right now, if everybody here, if you got to gather now, if you have 295, 10, like, 299.
It's gone now, so... He may get to 300 by the time he gets back. Okay, so I mean, motion to approve, and for Dubos. Second, Commissioner Purvis. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and then we have an addenda, number 29. Discussing consider approval of change order 010 for the courthouse restoration project in the amount of $18,063.86 for roofing adjustments at skylights to be paid from the restoration projects funds. Our construction manager has constructed select demolition findings of the previously concealed conditions have revealed that the existing four skylights were originally constructed as permanent fast-in-place concrete curved roof openings. Thus, the skylight curves are an integral part of building structure and cannot be safely removed. So it was determined that additional roofing with detailing would be necessitated to build up and create a water pipe assembly that's at and around the permanent roof curves. The proposed added roofing with detailing ensures that the roofing manufacturer's 20-year warranty can be maintained. Change order 010 is presented to account for the additional roofing and detailing as warranted for the manufacturer's detail. The per skylight cost breakdown, the total cost is $18,063.86. And each of the skylights is $4,515.96. The Texas Historical Commission has confirmed that funding for all change orders required due to previously unknown issues are eligible for supplemental funding by the state. And this change order will be submitted by December for your review and consideration. So basically, it's a structural change that would help us prevent leaking. I will tell you all this, when we first started working on it, the roof that was on the courthouse at that time had been in an emergency, I think, by the Texas Historical Commission. Obviously, the work wasn't very well done. Since the Historical Commission came back later and said, no, that needs to be changed. But the first time that I presented with the Texas Historical Commission, one of the things that I took with me was photos of the courtroom, the district courtroom, where you could see little stalactites that were hanging from the concrete, which was from how long that roof had been leaning. Fix the file for stalactites and stalatites to glow. And that was one of the issues that truly caught their attention and also... So I will tell you, the last thing we need is a leaky roof.
They did confirm, or says they confirmed, that it's been, but it's been riding.
Yeah, they've already sent us the information for all of the change orders that were due. And so we are eligible for all, for all of them, not just for this, for all. Commissioner Robinson, Commissioner Purvis. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? There, motion carries. Second, Commissioner Purvis.